One, two. Thank you for your patience on the zip line item. Let me get back to my agenda. All right. ZF 2025-09, consider whether the zip line Nest Z drone testing facility qualifies as a small experimental agricultural and seed research facility to be processed as a site plan review. Before we take a presentation from Jeff Anderson, we've also been encouraged to give our disclosures upfront about any conversations or meetings we've had about this item, if any.
So I did do a site visit at the point of several weeks ago. Yeah, it's been a while, but got the full metal jacket tour.
Yeah, same here. A couple of weeks ago, I went on a tour, checked out the facility.
And we were actually at the facility at the same time.
I was fortunate enough to be able to take that tour two weeks ago as well. And I've had a brief conversation with Scott Stone about the project as well.
I visited the site.
Apparently, we have all taken the tour?
Yeah.
Chair Duquette is raising her hand.
Yes, I took the tour as well.
Okay. Now we can begin with our staff presentation.
Good morning, Chair Dubin, members of the planning commission. Jeff Anderson, principal planner. I will provide a brief overview of Zone File 2025-009 and the interpretive questions being asked of the commission. The project applicant is ZipLine International and the property owner is Yolo Land and Cattle Company. Project site is located at 24445 County Road 25, approximately 3.5 miles southwest of Vespardo. The main project operations referred to as Nest Z are located on a five acre portion of a 466 acre parcel. The entire Yolo County, Yolo Land and Cattle Ranch outlined in red on the exhibit is approximately 7,500 acres. The parcels are all designated as agriculture in the 2030 Countywide General Plan and are Zone Agricultural Extensive, AX. The Yolo Land Cattle Ranch is surrounded by AX zone land to the north, east, and south, and primarily public open space land, zone land to the west. And there's a little, not little, but a yellow parcel that is outlined within that larger Yolo County, Yolo, I keep saying that, Yolo Land and Cattle Ranch, I won't say county. That yellow parcel is not part of the Yolo Land and Cattle Ranch. The Nest Z Drone Testing Facility includes two modular office buildings, one of which is two stories, two 1,600 square foot tents, 21 Conex storage containers, and 31 drone docking towers, and several other ancillary structures to support its operations. To the east of the Nest Z area is an open field that ZipLine has set up several mock delivery sites designed to simulate backyard environments for test deliveries. ZipLine has also constructed a 12-foot tall visual observation tower approximately a quarter mile south of Nest Z, which is staffed by an employee at all times at drones or aloft. And I'll share photos of these in a couple of slides. ZipLine currently employs approximately 18 employees of the site, and those are between three daily shifts. ZipLine currently conducts approximately 500 to 600 drone flights per day over 5,800 acres of the Yolo Land and Cattle Ranch. No flights currently occur over the four westernmost parcels, which are shown on the exhibit, a little hard to see, but in the orange hatch area. There are approximately seven to eight drones aloft at any given time and up to 20 drones on occasion. Most flights occur at 300 to 400 feet above ground level and sometimes reaching to a height of about 700 feet. The flights last anywhere from five to 15 minutes and follow a programmed course returning to the dock station at the completion of each flight. And each drone has red and green position indicator lights and white strobes on the wings as required by the FAA, which is similar to standard aircraft that you'll see. ZipLine proposes to expand operations in the near future, including 12 additional Conex storage containers, three additional drone docking towers, and expansion of the temporary mock delivery sites. At full buildout, the number of daily test flights proposed to increase to approximately 2,500. On this slide, on the left, you'll see kind of the, the kind of the full scale of the Nest Z facility that's within the, about the five acre footprint. And on the right is an example of their drone docking towers. The left here is the modular two-story office building, and on the right is the backyard areas where they run test delivery flights, which is to the south, southeast of the Nest Z facility. Here is the visual observation tower that's located about a quarter mile south. You'll see it's out, it's, there's a red star of where the location is in comparison to the Nest Z footprint. So ZipLine started operating its drone testing facility at the property in 2017 and has gradually increased the development within the five acre footprint over the years. After conversations with staff in the early part of this year, ZipLine submitted an application for a site plan review in April as a small experimental agricultural and seed research facility under 8-2306-Q of the county code. The facility is considered small because the developed area does not occupy more than five acres. The zoning code defines agricultural and seed research as industrial or scientific uses subordinate to and in support of agriculture and include product processing plants and agriculturally based laboratories or facilities for the production of food, fiber, seeds, animal husbandry, or medicine, and may include administrative office space in support of the operation. ZipLine's facility conducts industrial or scientific research related to the viability and reliability of drone delivery systems that are journaling for commercial uses that deliver small orders to customers like the services provided by DoorDash or Postmates. But ZipLine's drones can also support animal husbandry or medicine. Thus, the key question for the planning commission to consider is whether the drone testing facility is subordinate to and in support of agriculture. In the staff's opinion, that the drone testing facility is subordinate to the larger agricultural operations occurring on the Yolo Land and Cattle Ranch. Occupations occupy less than 0.1% of the 7,500 acre ranch, and there has been no indication that a site construction, employee presence, and drone testing have interfered with agriculture in the area. The more challenging question is whether the project is in support of agriculture. ZipLine states that the company has delivered over 100,000 animal vaccines and over 35,000 animal insemination straws to farmers in rural and agricultural areas, and delivers dozens of agricultural and gardening consumer products for homeowners and farmers in Arkansas and Texas. While staff does not minimize the potential for agricultural application of ZipLine's technology, staff is also mindful that ZipLine's business is driven in large part by retail delivery operations, such as through his partnership with Walmart to provide on-demand home delivery. It is therefore not entirely clear whether the project is in support of agriculture, the same way as other research facilities approved, that are approved in agricultural zones. Examples of projects, the county has approved a small experimental agricultural and seed research facilities include expansion of a laboratory and testing plant for seed diseases and pathogens, a vegetable seed research station, and a seed research and breeding facility. These examples clearly meet the intent of small experimental agricultural and seed research facility under Section 8-2306-Q of the county code by demonstrating the uses are incidental to the main agricultural use in the area and in support of agriculture. The county requested that ZipLine consult with a qualified biologist to prepare a report to assess the biological resources that may be affected by the operation of the Nest Z facility and associated drone flight areas. This report prepared by, by drone ecological, ecological consulting concluded that there is a low potential that drones flying within the flight area may cause bird nest abandonment due to the continued and ongoing operations where drone activity has become the current baseline. There is little documented evidence that drones significantly impact flying birds, and no known bird strikes have occurred during the last seven years ZipLine has been operational on the project site. The report states that it is possible that nest abandonment could occur if drone flights were conducted too close to an active nest. It is also possible that flying birds may be impacted by colliding with drones, but the likelihood of this is low, given the robust operational history of the site without known strike issues. The drone also concluded that there's little evidence to, little evidence to suggest that flying bats are adversely affected by the drones, and no collisions or other issues have been documented. The drone does recommend several measures to minimize the potential impacts to birds and bats as a result of operations in the flight area and the Nest Z facility, including buffers from different areas and worker awareness training. So due to the nature of the operations, a drone testing facility could likely only occur on and over large contiguous parcels in remote areas, such as those found in the AX zone. However, however, it's unclear whether the existing zoning code accommodates such a unique use. If the planning commission interprets the code to determine that ZipLine's operations constitute a small experimental agricultural and seed research facility, then staff will process the site plan review accordingly. And a site plan review is a ministerial permit that ensures compliance with code, with objective code requirements and therefore does not require a full SEQA review. However, if the planning commission determines that the project does not constitute a small experimental agricultural and seed research facility, then ZipLine would need to apply for zoning code amendments to ask the board to add drone testing facility to the list of allowable uses in the AX zone and obtain approval at whatever level that is designated in the code amendment. This process is more involved and would be a discretionary act that would require preparation of a SEQA document. Before I conclude, I just wanted to note that, and Stephanie mentioned earlier in this meeting, that staff has received 11, 11 comment letters after the publication of the agenda materials for this item, and all letters were forwarded to the planning commission and are available to the public on the table to my right. This concludes my presentation. Available for any questions that the planning commission may have.
Um, I'm glad you have the slides still up. I'm trying to make sure I understand. Is it really 2A, 2B, and that's it? Or is there another thing? Because even though we haven't had the discussion yet, let's say, you know, we're dubious about 2A, but we do understand that, or we do understand that uses are allowed with minor use permits, but not necessarily a zoning code amendment. Can you elaborate on helping us understand really what the choices are? And is it only 2A and 2B?
Well, before Derek.
So the question for today is purely interpretive question, which is, does this kind of use qualify as a small agricultural testing facility? And the point of 2A, 2B is to then show you the ramifications of that decision. So if you decide that it is, then they will be able to continue with their application for a site plan review, which staff will process and issue the thing with objective criteria from different laws.
I do have a related question.
I will take it, but are you?
I think maybe Chair Dubin, are you asking, or is there another option that we didn't identify?
Well, so I'm looking at the text that says, you know, sport shooting, hunting gun. These are examples of things that have been approved in ag zones, ag intensive with, or ag extensive with a major, I'm sorry, a major or minor use permit. And that doesn't seem to be part of 2A or 2B.
Correct. So you're again, your decision is purely the interpretive question. If you then decide 2B and say it is not a small agricultural, then they have to come back and submit a new application because the site plan review application is submitted, they're not eligible for that.
Oh, I see. So the minor use permit decision, that fits into 2B, item two, zoning approval for the project.
That would be a 2C.
That would be a 2C.
We would craft that custom.
Today, I start, I, we actually discussed whether to include the, the second half of 2B because it would be you guys kind of what's in, we think you should come in for something. And that reflected staff's decision that it really wasn't better fit in zoning code, that if it's, it's either this or something new. And so basically, they would come in for a new application. If they wanted to apply to say, we want to apply for a helipad, and we would go through and say, we don't think it's eligible, but you can apply for whatever you want. But basically, I mean, for purposes of you today, really, it's just the interpretation.
No, I understand, but somehow it feels relevant to know, like, what are the avenues? And I think I got that clarification.
So, so my question is to the, the other fit issue. So was 8-2303-C agricultural, commercial, and rural recreation use types considered? And if so, why isn't it brought up? Because it, this strikes me as incidental to the underlying agricultural use, small footprint, doesn't require rezoning from the AX zoning. Seems, superficially, it seems very plausible as an option here. Because I, I have to admit, I'm struggling with the idea this is a small experimental agricultural and seed research facility, even though I am personally, so far, positively oriented towards this project. I just don't know that it fits the specific request here.
Can you, can you read that again? What was the?
So, um, under Yolo County Code 8-2303-C, agricultural, commercial, and rural recreation use types include commercial uses incidental to the agricultural or horticultural operations in the area that preserve the rural lifestyle and stimulate agricultural economy. These use types examples do not require rezoning to the agricultural commercial zone, which is reserved for significant agricultural commercial uses that are the primary use of the property. I, you know, there weren't a lot of examples there. And that's what we're struggling with, right? Is there's no specific language that seems directly appropriate. But this seemed like a bucket that, again, I'm not a lawyer, that's why I'm looking at you, Eric, seemed like a bucket that might be plausible for this case.
So, um, what I could see was the kind of blah description of what is later on in the code as many different types of specific use types that also ascribes the level of approval and, you know, whether it's allowed or not, depending on the zone and level. So, you know, that included key areas, support agricultural work services, items to production, things like that that are allowed in different agricultural zones. So staff went through that process of going through those tables and seeing which buckets might work.
Okay.
And from our analysis, those buckets, other than potentially the small agricultural research facility, were not appropriate. And so therefore, that's why the applicant applied under, as a cycling approval for that bucket. And so your job here today is not to try to fix everything or figure it all out. It's more of a narrow question. And therefore, that's why we're just presenting you with this interpretive question, not saying, oh, let's go through this list and see.
Yeah, you look at the table, you know, if you read into the agricultural, commercial, and rural recreational uses and what are allowed and what are not allowed, there really is nothing, I would, I agree with you guys, the closest thing you could get to. I mean, it's like commercial farm equipment sales to corn mazes to wineries, breweries, distilleries. There's nothing that even comes that, that even would be, you know, farm stays, hotels, motels, you know, a lot of things aren't allowed, and some of them are allowed, but like, they require a major use permit. And so I think what we're trying to, you know, I would agree that is the, I looked through the whole thing too. And I was like, is there any other categories that you might be able to interpret that? But I think that that is probably the closest one that I could find too, that, that seemed like it was the, the right fit.
I actually have a different angle on the question, which is, everything out there is removable and restorable. It's all temporary. The only thing that's out there that's not temporary are the concrete paths. So for.
They could pick them up. They put them there with a crane.
Yeah, they can take them away. They could come in with tractor trailers. They could be gone in a couple of days. So, you know, when I think about the permanent, the major use permit, minor use permit dynamic that might result from requiring a higher level of review, it's like, okay, but those are typically for permanent facilities.
Is that true though? Because what, if you authorize.
I asked, I asked him when I was on site.
A solar array that's just ballasted, it's like not even touching, but it's going to be there for 30 years. Like.
It's temporary is a relative term. Yes.
Well, I'm not sure, I'm not sure I understood it that way. That is the determination of major use permit or whatever related to how easy it is to pick it up.
Well, I think about farm facilities though, and there's, there are seasonal multi-year installations that are temporary to resolve a certain thing. And then those installations move on. They're considered an accessory use typically. There was no conversations with permit staff. And I do think about this, this project site is hard because there's an expansion proposed. It has been in operation for a number of years. But I also see the five acre limitation is, is a challenge in my mind because the flights are over the entire, almost the entire ranch. So is, aside from the flight characteristics, yes, it falls within that five acres, but these flights are 24 hours a day across the whole ranch. So does that really, is that threshold? So I have some questions about like the, the nature of the facility as almost a transient facility that is proposed for extension, but for how long? And, you know, are, are we setting a precedent for other types of facilities like this in other parts of the county by saying, okay, this is fine to go through a ministerial process? Because if so, we're never going to see proposal again like this unless there's an issue. It'll just, you know, and this is new technology. There's, you know, impacts maybe that we haven't thought of that we'll find about 10, 20 years from now. So I don't know. These are all, a lot of questions that are floating around in my head that are, you know, having, having consideration for the qualification for the specific item that's on the ministerial side versus a minor use permit context, like a heely pad with agricultural accessory that seems like it could fit as a cluster of projects. But there's no clean fit for all of your points for, for any particular.
Yeah. And I think, I mean, I think we're not, we're not trying to get into the commissioner discussion period prior to the public comment period. What we're trying to do is make sure that we've asked enough questions to understand what we're doing here.
Right. Yeah. So the, so my, one of my questions, did you look at it as a, as a more temporary transient facility or only as a permanent facility that would require long-term permits to operate?
The other, the other one is the, you know, other accessory agricultural support structures, you know, is this supporting agriculture in some way? I mean, I think that there's, um, yeah, I would agree. I think that there's a, a difference between a permanent, you know, if somebody was building something that was way more permanent. But I, I think there are a lot of questions out there about how the five acres is that, are you limiting that? I mean, is the airspace above the five acres? It's not, is it affecting the cattle ranch? I mean, from all the, you know, from the rancher perspective, no. So I think there's just a lot of interesting questions. This is like definitely one of the more interesting things I think I've ever seen on the planning commission. I have to say it's very fascinating and is a very challenging one. I think Eric, one of my main questions is what door are we opening here by allowing this, by not having an application, a specific application that has parameters around certain things? This is kind of, we are basically allowing this to go through as a site plan review and not really have a specific application. And so the precedent that it's going to set, how is it different than application that came through to ask for this to be, I'm just curious about, because I think that's one of my main fears is that there's technology and things that we haven't thought about out there that may come through that might be detrimental to agriculture, but are you going to use this as an example of a way to kind of put their foot in the door? And so I'm just curious about what your thoughts are about that.
And if I could add on to that, in the staff report, it says that, that this is a use that's by right, but subject to zoning restrictions?
Yeah, subject to performance standards.
Standards. And I, I was piling around trying to find, you know, what the by right categories were. And I'm just totally ignorant on that.
So depending on the use that's listed as a by right use, sometimes if you look in the table, you'll see the section, it's usually section 306, and it'll have a subsection Q or R or whatever. And those often identify certain criteria that we look at when we're evaluating a site plan review to determine the use does stay within those parameters. If they exceed, like in this case, let's say they were eight acres, then they're beyond that small experimental by right use for a five acre facility. That's just an example.
Challenge when you layer the questions.
Make you earn your living here.
So we should perform a cast about this, maybe if there's a difference between temporary and permanent in terms of the improvements. And a lot of times, we, you know, that's irrelevant considering the gin. We can see that temporary uses are treated somewhat differently than permanent ones. But for, I think for our purposes, these structures require building permits, like, yes, they are temporary in the sense that they can, but they've been there for years and the plan is to keep them there for years. So we aren't really distinguishing in that way. They have all the characteristics of permanent improvements that they need to be treated, et cetera, a lot of different codes. In terms of opening the door, so I don't think that your decision here on this interpretive question will set a precedent, unless there's a lot of other drone testing operators that are just wanting to come to your account. But, and it doesn't create a legal precedent for anybody else really to say like, well, I do agriculture and commercial testing at my facility, and I also want to be in here. So you legally have to allow me to do this as well. I think every situation is going to be different. But, you know, I think it kind of maybe sets a new, a new benchmark, if you will, in terms of other projects that have come through the pipe, just like Jeff talked about other projects that have been improved under this use type. You know, we interpret the language, but we also look at what have we done in the past? Is this similar? Is this different? You can try to make a decision based off that. So legally, it's not a legal precedent, but it is kind of another factor that would be considered in the future.
If, if you had your druthers about like revising the code, like it's a small experimental agricultural and seed research facility. That's unnecessarily specific. It could just say agricultural research facility or something like, I don't want to spend our time parsing like and/or, you know what I mean? Like, but because that table of uses seems to be comprehensive, in other words, it has to fit into one of these boxes, then we have to look at the language? That's exactly what it says?
So the tables provide a sampling, if you will. We cannot think of everything ever, right? Then we become static. And so that is kind of one of the, that's what we're grappling with here. And that's why Commissioner Saleh decided, hey, let's look at the use type, which, which we also did to try to say, well, that use isn't listed, but is there a use type where we can say it's generally like this use over here, where we have some standards identified, which I think Commissioner McCormick brought up regarding a helipad? Is it a helipad? And we did kind of look at that use as well. And we thought, the way a helipad is defined in the code to support agricultural spray operations. So there are, you know, we did kind of do this same exercise.
I sort of feel like that's less of a stretch than agricultural and seed research.
I think in that case, the code. Also, in this case, we have a facility that has more than just, you know, drone launching, you know, a helipad for drones, you will. There's the, the office status and things like that. I think the principle that Stephanie was articulating memorialized, though you don't have to pull this up, I'm just going to read it for the record, is Section 8-2-227. And that section talks about looking to the kind of characteristics of the use and whether those are similar to other uses that are possible. And seeing where. And seeing whether the use is consistent with the general purposes of the zone or the same general character is the kind of use that are allowed in the zone. So it does give some flexibility to the decision maker making that interpretation to, to kind of decide, okay, is this the same general character as the other kinds of use that we see? Which is why I listed those other uses. We can still are guided, you first start with the language and then you start going from there.
In this case, it, it seems the physical facilities within that five acre, I mean, referred to the spice, the, as the spaceport by, by the applicant, the landowner, is, is fascinating, right? Like this is, this is the high technology research facilities we would expect to, to roll out from UC Davis, from our local academic institutions, and we want to be able to support technological innovation in the county. And so I've just can, kind of been scratching my head because it seems like it's a combination of multiple different types that are mentioned. And within that five acres, it's the on the ground physical infrastructure. Seems like it would fit pretty well on an experimental, you know, an experimental agriculture, technological kind of facility with office space, with the garage where they, they do the maintenance and update. But a piece that I've been scratching my head about is the, is the aerial aspect of the operations. And it seems any of the other uses within this category, with this, within the zoning category are that involve aerial flight also require a minor use permit, whether it's a airport, whether it's a helipad, whether it's anything else. So that, that's kind of where my, my brain is going is it's, it seems because that has the potential to affect neighboring landowners, it has the potential to affect other areas outside of just that five acres. And so I'm curious if that has been researched at all or how you thought about that aerial dynamic to operations in context to this proposal.
You technically land use, but do you look at the ground, the conversion changes in terms of traffic? We also do look at other impacts, you know, that will be, we look at traffic, we look at air emissions. And, and so, yeah, so the fact that you're launching dozens of little drones across the airspace of the property is, is of note and consideration. With what I'm hearing you say is you're seeing a pattern that for those kinds of projects, not usually looks, they don't look to be approved through a site plan or a ministerial group with some more thorough consideration. And that could be things that take that, you're saying, no, we don't think it fits under this category. Then what would happen is staff would have to decide, okay, does that mean we should go this path? Helipad or some other combination, or you want to end the zoning code or try, try this or something. So again, I, I hear what you're saying, I, I, but we don't have to solve everything today because it really is that integral question.
I noticed that Commissioner Ducat has her hand up.
We just have a couple of questions. There's definitely, it's an ancillary use, there's some agricultural application. But do we have any other type of drone standards? Because this is an emerging industry and this is being used in a lot of different applications, water management, forest management on ranches. So theoretically, there could be ag lands already utilizing drones for operations and that are using drones on their property. And does that impact any of our decisions? And could we approve this experimental use because it may be the thing that fits the most today? But would it preclude us from maybe handling this topic down the road for a larger conversation? I think too, you know, zoning code can get static, but we do have new technologies and government's always a little bit behind in terms of like what's going to be applied on these types of lands 10 years from now, 15 years from now? Just trying to get a better understanding because this type of technology may already be in use in other properties and different types of applications. Obviously, this is more of a research-based facility to, you know, experiment before they launch some of these stuff out in the fields.
Yeah, so we, the county has never approved any drone use on other properties. I, you know, I wouldn't be surprised if other, if some operations use them in their, in, in some capacity. But we have not ever evaluated that, that type of use for any other project. And I, I do want to point out, after you're done with your discussion, the applicant does have a presentation that they would like to share with you as well.
Yeah, I do want to move on to that, although Commissioner Ducat said she had a couple of questions. Are you?
That's it for now, I'll wait for after the presentation.
Okay, great.
Well, the question I heard her ask that I don't know if we got covered was whether we could queue this up for a discussion around a zoning code amendment. If we were to prove this today with staff's recommendation, could we queue this up for a larger conversation? Because drone-wide impact or county-wide impacts of commercial drone applications could be something that falls into the purview of the zoning code and, and land use more generally.
I think that's a, an obvious segue from this discussion, thank you.
So let's have, you said the applicant has a presentation.
Yes.
Yes.
Well, I can officially say good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Planning commissioners, county staff, thank you so much for being here today. My name is Alyssa Pont and I'm deputy general counsel for ZipLine. And I really appreciate your time in considering our land use classification. I want to start by sharing a little bit about our company because I think it is really important to keep in mind as we discuss this classification in particular. One thing I do want to keep at the forefront, just based on some of the questions that came up, was that under the YCC, agricultural research is defined as industrial or scientific uses subordinate to and in support of agriculture. And I think especially instructive here is the worst word, the use of the word industrial, which suggests that it's not just limited to, you know, experimental food research or seed research, but includes broader items, including drone use. I think another point I want to just make at the outset is that the YCC also says that these facilities must be compatible with the underlying agricultural use. So that actually provides staff with another point at which they could reject an application if they found that the particular use might interfere with agriculture. As you'll see from our report and some of the research we've done, we've been operating in harmony with the Yolo Land and Cattle Ranch for seven years. And so I think that that shows that we operate very nicely with the agricultural use. But if another use were to come along that wasn't so great, staff could reject it on that basis. So just wanted to start out there. So ZipLine's mission is to bring transportation infrastructure into the 21st century. Our goal is to build a drone logistics system using fully autonomous, zero emission aircraft that provide fast, safe, clean and reliable drone deliveries of all types of products to all humans equally. Our test site at, in Yolo County, nicknamed Nest C, provides huge value to ZipLine in accomplishing this mission. ZipLine began delivering products using our autonomous aircraft in Rwanda in 2016. And since then, we've expanded to many countries in Africa, delivering thousands of types of products to build the world's largest drone delivery service. We've made over 1.6 million commercial deliveries and flown 100 million autonomous miles. In the U.S., we've been operating in a small town in Arkansas since 2021. But earlier this year, we launched commercial operations in the Dallas-Fort Worth metro area. Our partner there was Walmart, but we've already expanded to serving other businesses, including Chipotle and Buffalo Wild Wings, with the intention of adding many more partners in the coming months. So if you're in Dallas, you can get your burrito delivered by your own, so. So ZipLine's test site does meet the definition for small agricultural research facility because the main use of our technology has been and will continue to be serving agricultural and research, or agricultural and rural communities. Almost all of ZipLine's 1.6 million deliveries have been to serving these communities and our testing most directly benefits them. Really, we're only at about 50,000 suburban deliveries in, in Dallas. The rest of the 1.6 million have all been to rural locations in Africa. Those deliveries have mostly consisted of providing rural healthcare and animal health and husbandry, which I'll talk about a little bit more in a minute. But I did want to highlight two other key areas where we can provide support to agricultural and rural communities. As I mentioned, we did just start delivering food and retail products in the U.S. in the Dallas-Fort Worth area, but that's really only step one in a much larger vision we have for being able to bring these deliveries to all types of communities. And our testing at Nest C directly enables this. It allows us to test for rural deliveries because we actually use the Stones Barn as a test site. And we see how our drones interact with that barn. So we can assure ourselves that if we make a delivery near a barn, it'll go well. But we're also looking to test for, you know, how our drones will interact in dense cities and suburban environments. But really, it's, the vision is universal access. The other way that we are supporting rural and agricultural communities is through our leadership in the drone industry. ZipLine has been working closely with the FAA for several years. We're at the forefront of the industry in enabling drones to integrate into the national airspace. This is paving the way for not just ZipLine, but other drone uses to be able to operate. So what we're seeing is that, yes, ZipLine is operating in the airspace. So that means that, you know, more directly agricultural uses such as crop dusting or surveying can also be used and done safely and efficiently. So as I mentioned, rural access to healthcare is, is really the beating heart of ZipLine. It's why a lot of us work for this company. It's a cause we deeply believe in and has been at the core of our mission for the last, you know, since 2016. We serve over 5,000 rural health facilities. And for a lot of these facilities, ZipLine is the only provider of medical products. And that's in part because some of them are just so hard to reach that traditional ground infrastructure can't make it there. But it's also because we're more efficient and cost effective compared to traditional ground infrastructure. We can also deliver temperature-sensitive and delicate products like vaccine and antivenom, which is really helpful for a lot of these rural communities. In 2022, we launched our animal health and husbandry services. And I actually had these numbers updated since when we initially submitted this. We've delivered over 200,000 pig poultry and animal vaccines in Rwanda, Ghana and Kenya. We've also provided pig and cattle artificial insemination deliveries since 2023. And I'll talk about those in a little bit. And I think that's a really great example of how ZipLine can provide deep impacts to rural communities, not just in the case of artificial insemination, but more broadly in agriculture. And so what we saw with the artificial insemination case was ZipLine's faster, whether that's because we don't have to worry about traffic or we don't need to load up a big truck that makes multiple stops. The service is more direct, more quick, much more fast. We also are more reliable and we've shown through testing at Nest C that we can maintain temperatures within plus or minus two degrees, which leads to up to a 30% increase in motility and more successful inseminations. In a practical aspect, we've also shown that ZipLine can really help ag vets because they don't have to, you know, before ZipLine, they were doing the insemination, coming back to get more supply, going back out, coming in, going out. But with ZipLine, we can just meet them where they're at and they can cut out that extra step of going back for more products. But you don't have to take my word for it that farmers and ranchers love ZipLine. A few weeks ago, the Stones, our landlords, hosted a group of ranchers at Nest C and they were really excited about our service. They, you know, pretty universally said that they would absolutely use the service if it was available. In particular, you know, they said that sometimes driving to town can take half a day. It costs them, you know, salary, time that they just don't have. And if ZipLine could deliver right to them, that's a benefit and a service that they would take advantage of. Another thing that a lot of them talked about was our low environmental impact, which, as you can see from this graph, ZipLine is significantly more environmentally friendly compared to traditional ground infrastructure. Obviously, gas powered delivery, we're way more efficient. But even compared to a fully electric vehicle, ZipLine can make 30 more deliveries for the same level of CO2 emissions. So looking at, you know, some of Yolo's goals and becoming carbon negative by 2030, ZipLine could be a service that greatly enables that. I did want to dig a little bit more into our actual work in Yolo County. We have been operating on the Yolo Land and Cattle Ranch since 2017. The ranch has over 7,400 acres and ZipLine operates on just 4.9 acres of that land. We only conduct commercial, or we only conduct research and testing in that facility. We don't have any commercial uses. We also don't plan to expand our footprint at all. And as you can see from the aerial shot on the right up there, we're kind of just located on a little triangle, looks a little bit like an upside down Texas. But all of our buildings and infrastructure are temporary movable lightweight, designed to be changed frequently, and that's entirely by our design and our use. And like I said, we don't have any plans to expand. We just hope to continue operating our small lightweight test facility on the Stones property as we have been for the last seven years.
Just a quick clarification question, what's the, the flight radius around your, your five acre footprint approximately?
You mean in terms of where we fly?
Yeah.
So the flight routes tend to extend, as you can see on that map. If you draw kind of like a diagonal down to the southwest, not the red edge of the property, but one parcel over and back. Another commitment we have to Yolo County is bringing jobs. We have over 20 employees and contractors who live and work in Yolo County. These are high-tech jobs, aviation field jobs. There's on the, on the job training, apprenticeships and room for growth. And we've just been particularly lucky with the talent pool out here in Yolo County and hope to continue accessing all, all of that great talent. We've also been really fortunate to have supportive neighbors. You know, we've, we've seen all the letters that have come in and support of us today and honestly, I And honestly, I was pretty touched by some of what they said about ZipLine's mission and our ability to serve agricultural communities and their excitement to have these services, you know, available to them hopefully soon. We also have some great organizational supporters here in Yolo, including the Madison Fire Department and Fire Chief Paul Green, who has been involved in our operation for quite some time, has made a few sites visits as well. We've also received endorsements from the Yolo County Farm Bureau and the Center for Land-Based Learning, emphasizing the importance of our agricultural uses, our agricultural impact, and our ability to make deliveries to remote and rural communities. I think, you know, my time's almost up. So I will just leave you with the idea that right now is a really crucial moment for our company. We're just starting to gain traction in drone delivery in the U.S. after years and a lot of time and money and investment. So right now, every dollar, every minute, every test we do at NSC is incredibly important, mission-critical to our company. And we really hope to continue building our vision of the future here in Yolo. Thank you.
Let's open the public comment. Do we have comment cards? Okay, we have Scott Stone.
Do I need to push the button on this? Good afternoon, staff and members of the commission. Sarah, I hope you're having fun over there. I'll keep this short so you can get back to the beach. Boy, after hearing the C-Mex presentation this morning, this makes this job, I think, pretty easy. So the Yolo Land and Cattle, I'm here representing as a partner with my brother Casey and our wives Angela and Karen. We've been great stewards of the land for the last 49 years. We've owned the ranch. Next year is our 50-year anniversary, and we hope to have quite a celebration. We've been a great partner with Yolo County over the years. This is an incredible opportunity for the county to be leaders in the nation and in the world for this amazing drone technology. Unfortunately, this project does not fit neatly, tied up with a bow into the box of zoning guidelines. And I see that you folks have been struggling with that and trying to figure out a path forward that works for everybody. But when you have technology this amazing and has the potential to change things in the world, rarely does these kind of things fit into the typical zoning guidelines. So I'm here today just briefly to answer any questions that you may have of us as the landowners and ranch operators. This project is in support of agriculture and subordinate to the primary ag uses on the ranch, which is very important. And again, just because this use is not listed in the zoning guidelines doesn't make it the wrong use. We need a path forward that does not require the SEQA process, which is a disaster in California and is pretty much in place to be the death knell for projects. So we want to work with the county any way, shape, form we can to try to make this happen. So we're asking the commission to help us keep this amazing project moving forward and work with us in trying to get something done. Santa Barbara County just passed a resolution back in January where they went and revamped completely their agricultural zoning guidelines to allow for a bunch of different uses. And so maybe it might be something that, in the future, the county can look at. Anyway, thanks for your time today. If you have any questions before I sit down, I'm happy to answer anything I can. We provided you folks with a ton of information already, so.
Any questions for the applicant?
Hey, thank you.
Any more public comment? Okay, seeing none. I'm closing the public comment and opening commissioner discussion. We had a little bit in the service of asking questions about what our job is today. I mean, usually I don't start, but I will start by saying that I think many commissioners are positively influenced by the concept that this is everything the applicant has said. It is compatible in the sense that we've had the chance to see, you know, how it interacts with cattle. It's interesting to me that these facilities tend to wind up on cattle ranches because apparently cattle are not easily bothered. I was concerned about bird strikes, but we seem to have some body evidence that we don't have them for whatever reason. So, you know, a lot of the things that I think we would ordinarily be curious about, we've had a chance to have at least some data. And so I think, you know, my question is what we were grappling with before is this. I'm trying to understand. For myself, I've satisfied compatibility. I've satisfied subordinate to the agricultural use. I am a little interested in the fact that, you know, in Africa, these drones have been used primarily, I would say, for agricultural uses. And in the United States, that's not the case yet. And I'm less interested in delivering burritos based on research done on agricultural land and more interested in like, how do we actually get this technology to do exactly what's been said? In other words, reduce carbon emissions by flying things out instead of having people driving all over the place. And I'm curious about that flow, right? Like, how do we start flipping that switch so that our county actually benefits from the environmental advantage of this and the access to agricultural area? To me, it's a technicality. Like, how do we make it work in a way that isn't just a rubber stamp? Like, we have to be comfortable that we're not setting a strange precedent and that we are stretching our brains to make this correct. So that's my.
I think I have. I struggled with a couple of things. I think that I think you guys could have been a little more creative in like explaining like how this could benefit agriculture directly. You know, I'm a farmer. I live maybe a little too far away from where these drones would be able to deliver to. But how it might be able to directly, you know, delivering semen is not something that, you know, most of the farmers need around here. What do we need? We need parts. We need. There's all these different applications that I think we could have envisioned and we could imagine. That for me would be, you know, incredibly, for $3, I could have like a bearing delivered to me that I didn't have to drive to, you know, 45 minutes for. Those are the kind of pieces for me that make a lot of sense. And I can see that application happening. You know, eventually, if, you know, a parts store or the bearings, you know, there's lots of. Woodland is an incredible place. It's a hub for agriculture, and it has every service that you could possibly imagine. It's actually kind of amazing. You go to most other major, you know, parts of farming communities, and they don't have a hub like Woodland does that has pretty much everything you could possibly need to, you know, run a ranch or run a farm. So these are the kind of things that I think I'm interested in is that I see how it potentially could get that direction, go that direction. I just, I'm not sure that that's where the economics of it will eventually land, is the agricultural sector being your main driver in the U.S. And I think that's where I struggle with it. Is, I can see its purpose in lots of different ways with agriculture, but whether or not it will eventually impact that, I don't know. But I think I'm willing to try to see that happen. I think that's, there's enough. Piece out there. The only other question I had for staff was, you know, we talked about the structures being kind of semi-permanent. If they wanted to, say, put up a large permanent structure there on that facility, would that be something that would be allowed by right? Or would that something that would have to come back in?
So the threshold is five acres. So where, even though.
If they wanted to say on that five acres, if they wanted to put in a giant hangar, like a very permanent structure, that's something that we would basically, we would have no say in that, correct? It would just be a building permit?
That's right.
Because it's. I think the nature, the semi-permanent nature is probably by their design. But also, for me, that also made a kind of a difference in our discussion. It's like, it could potentially just pack up and go. But whether or not it becomes more of a permanent facility, that's maybe a little different. But we're not discussing that.
Eric, could you just remind us of the regulatory process involved in a minor use permit as opposed to a site plan review?
Right, so a minor use permit is approved by the zoning director, which is a staff-level decision. The zoning director can elevate it to the planning commission if they want. But it is a fully discretionary decision. So instead of using objective criteria that might be found in different, you know, laws and applying to the site plan review, here on a minor use permit, the decision-maker will consider things like, that are most subjective. Whether the impact is, you know, significant or not, or whether we can adequately address this issue or not, right? So there's not objective criteria. And so because of that, that would then trigger the SEQA to analyze the impacts and consider whether there are mitigation and there's great significance versus a serial approval because it's just looking at objective criteria. There's no real discretion in the sense. And that's why I just therefore.
Thank you. That's incredibly helpful.
For this particular interpretation item, because this isn't considering a project, it's considering how the project fits into the zoning code. If we were to move forward with staff's recommendation, A, would we be able to attach conditions of approval to it as the planning commission for, for example, a project review when the zoning code is updated to address commercial and experimental drone facilities? Or a condition of approval for carbon neutrality in line with the Climate Action Adaptation Plan within a certain timeframe? Or are those things off the table because this is merely an interpretation hearing?
Or the biologist's recommendations, too?
Right, right.
They're off the table for two reasons. One is because that's not the question that's been presented to you. But also, second, is implementing those kinds of conditions is a discretionary act.
Right, so it'd have to be a use permit.
Okay, in terms of carbon neutrality, what do we mean by that? Well, let's exercise discretion on the kinds of mitigation measures that we apply versus if there was an objective requirement, you know, that might be the building code or else you're.
Thank you, Eric. So I'm still really challenged. I'm very positively disposed towards this project, and I want to see where to make it fit. But the fit is challenging. And unfortunately, the alternative of minor use permit requirement then triggers the SEQA process. And I'm unclear as to what the economics of that would be for the project.
And to piggyback on that, it is very understandable why an applicant would not want to trigger the SEQA process.
Absolutely.
But it is not clear if it's really a parody proposition to say, okay, for a cell tower, we have to do the whole habitat and the whole EIR. But for a drone facility, we don't like that. No matter what your attitude is on SEQA in general, it is the law of the land. And we have.
Well, it may be deemed exempt as well, depending on staff's review of if it's going through the use permit process.
But it doesn't seem like it would be able to even go through a use permit process. It would need to go through a zoning change because there is no, really, there is not. If we say it's not this, then it would probably have to go through a zoning change. I think that's the issue, is that there is no, right? I mean, that.
Well, I can see it as a multi-step process. The question of this project and whether this project can be shoehorned into some existing thing that we have, even though it clearly doesn't fit anything in particular. As in my mind, it's almost a stopgap for the more county-wide solution of a zoning code acknowledgement of these types of facilities. There may be more. There might be commercial drone delivery facilities and research facilities that come in in the future. We need to be able to acknowledge that that's going to happen and update the zoning code. But the timeframe on that is very unclear, right? Like, so if this is a one-time decision as a stopgap to that more comprehensive solution, I think we, as the county, need to be able to respond to that presumption of timeliness on an update to respond to this dynamic.
Yeah, I think my concern, you know, is a drone delivery service that starts up outside of Woodland that may deliver to ag places. Would that be allowed use? You know, I think that's where we're kind of at. It's like, and to me, this is a testing facility. It's a research facility. It's not actually going to be making those deliveries. And, yeah, I think that's, to me, that is the testing and the research nature of it maybe makes it different than an actual delivery, you know, commercial service. They're trying to develop this technology so that it can work, not that it's already working. And to me, that, and there is some potential use for agricultural, you know, services. Maybe in the U.S., it might not be exactly that. But without testing it and without being able to try it, we wouldn't have that potential anyways. So I think that's where it falls into a very gray area for me. It has the potential to, but without having the testing facility to even try it, it's.
But having it be site-constrained is a really good point. I hadn't been thinking about it like that before because it's, you know, commercial delivery and launch facilities for commercial delivery is different than a site-constrained testing facility that doesn't fly over the whole county.
Doesn't fly over the whole county. It just flies over a smaller area that's uninhabited, pretty much. So I think it's different in that sense in that they've picked those places particularly because they don't want to bother people. And it's not bothering the agriculture. It doesn't seem like underneath. So I don't know. I think it's a struggle.
Point like the hiring within the county, helping people with jobs here and really helping give them back to the county and not hiring from outside.
Commissioner Grul, can you talk into your mic? And I think we do have a potential comment if you're, but after you make your comment.
Always saying, I really like the mention of slides, like the hire within the county, the employees. And I think that's a really big point, that they're helping the county's economic growth and helping people in the county.
Sorry, we have a comment, but we also have Commissioner Duquette at her hand up. And I don't know which to do first. Okay, Commissioner Duquette.
I just wanted to also kind of piggyback on a couple of the comments in terms of what I felt helped from the presentation is really they're not increasing their footprint. It's a research facility. And I do think ultimately you want this to be able to serve our agricultural communities. But a lot of that means being proactive and looking at commercial drone uses in our county, but also across the state. It seems like, you know, the states that they're operating in don't, like Texas, don't really notoriously have a lot of zoning rules. But as having the privilege in my job to travel all over the state and really the remote agricultural production regions of California from ranch as well as a forested land that are in timber production, this definitely could have a benefit as well as the medical side because many of our residents throughout this state are hours away from any type of emergency medical care. So that kind of element in terms of supporting agricultural communities is very intriguing. I do think if we really want to consider commercial uses, we have to have that conversation of the zoning code. But I do, does give me some comfort that this is very much limited to the five-acre footprint and research on that property only. And so hopefully, there'll be less conflicts with neighbors and other type of issues that might come up with commercial drones operating.
Yes, Alyssa.
And then I have a question for Eric.
Well, thank you so much. I just wanted to clarify something about our current U.S. operational plan. Yes, we did start with delivering products for Walmart, Chipotle, Buffalo Wild Wings. But very quickly, we plan to add in different types of use cases, including, one example is our partnership with Worldpac, which is an automotive parts company. That's one of the next companies we plan to launch in the Dallas-Fort Worth area where we will be delivering automotive parts to, you know, residents in the Dallas-Fort Worth metro area.
As long as they're less than eight pounds.
Yeah. But they're really, they're very excited. I meet with them every week and, and they're really excited about this service and the value we can provide to them. And then as Commissioner Duquette mentioned, healthcare is another big one that we plan to move quickly on in the U.S. We didn't start with it because it's a little riskier. We wanted to continue testing and making sure our drones are operating well, but we do want to launch that. And we think it'll be incredibly impactful for people who are low mobility or who have other transportation issues, especially in rural communities. So I just wanted to clarify that. Yeah, now we're doing burritos, but hopefully we're going to be doing, you know, automotive parts, tractor parts, other things, prescription deliveries, medical product deliveries very soon. Thanks.
Thank you. Where were we? So, yes.
So Commissioner McCormick raised earlier whether any conditions could be attached here. I'm looking at the site plan review section 215B. It says development standards or simple conditions may be attached to the site plan review approval. What does that mean? What, what's the scope of development standards or simple conditions?
Considering a site plan approval is to look for other places where, you know, the legal requirements are applicable. And then those get incorporated as decisions. So for example, accessibility requirements, those come from other laws. And so we would include in a site plan approval that all these buildings have to be accessible. Why would we have a study law that objectively requires?
But why would you bother to do that? Because it's already mandated in the building code and the civil code.
But the, but the site plan approval process, that was just an example. The site plan approval process allows the applicant and staff to go through that process. So we can ensure that, you know, all the different requirements that might be applicable to the city are accounted for.
So it's nothing discretionary. It's all things that would be required and it's just a communication process with the applicant?
Right, well, there's development.
Yeah, we, we list them as standard requirements, but they, as Eric mentions, they do come from multiple agencies that might have any permitting review, environmental health, public works, if they needed an encroachment permit. So those are listed just to.
And so to Commissioner McCormick's point about climate action plan and other issues that are written in, in county policy, those wouldn't qualify?
They're not codified as standards. So any unique conditions, then we start treading in a more discretionary realm, if you will.
Yeah, it could be an example would be if, if there was a county code requirement that said for every five employees, a facility has to have one charging station. And that would get incorporated into the site plan review because we really don't have discretion. But if there was a county code requirement that said facilities require adequate charging and other ways to minimize greenhouse gas emissions. Right, now you're, you're exercising discretion and commenting charging stations, whatever things are required. And that would maybe get out of what really the segment is.
Further discussion before I entertain a motion from someone.
Is, I think this is a question of, I, I'm leaning towards the two A, but I also have this concern about the countywide impact of a decision like this. If we don't also address a definition in the zoning code for the point in two B. So I don't feel like those necessarily have to be tied together. So I guess the questions of, of staff, if we move forward with two A, but the, the planning commission also wants to see a more comprehensive solution and clarification around zoning code applicability for drone facilities. What is, what's the timeline, the process for doing that? Is there a zoning code amendment that you're already queuing up? We could tack this on to.
That, we, we are in the midst of finalizing a zoning code cleanup, we call it. We really haven't added any new uses that would create kind of a, an additional evaluation and could trigger sequoia. So the current zoning code cleanup we're doing is based off of some remaining funds we had from a LEAP grant regarding housing. And so that code amendment wasn't really subject to necessarily a new environmental review. But a timeline for that wouldn't, I mean, it really, you know, if we have the direction typically from our board of supervisors, you know, to, hey, we need to really amend this. We would first need to find a pot of money, just being honest with you, because we would, that would have to pay for staff time to do the research. I'm trying to think how we could incorporate something on a simpler scale because we do appreciate that our zoning code does tend to get far behind. As Commissioner Duquette said, that it's just the nature of, of zoning codes really.
If we're doing an interpretive decision today, can you leverage that interpretive decision to come back with some draft zoning code language that aligns with this interpretive decision? So that it's not, because we're, we're determining by if we are to move forward with two A, we would be determining that this is ministerial and sequoia does not apply to this project because it's inclusive of the existing.
Certainly in our, I, I think what I hear you saying is in our site plan review approval, we would capture that.
Yes.
In a summary. So all of our site plan reviews, you don't see them unless they're appealed. You give a pretty good project description and a summary of what, what section of the code we're looking at this under. But we certainly could capture that under that approval, if I'm understanding you correctly.
I also, you know, just being mindful of the limited resources that staff has. If this project were approved, you know, I think that would settle it for this project. We don't have a queue of other similar projects down the pipe. But I would, I think it could be consideration, and this might be something that is more long-term, like the next general plan, is a consideration of how technology research might fit in to the AgCEN, right? So that might be the time to have that conversations. Do we want to allow for more technological research that benefits from remote locations and large parcels planned that don't have more than five acres of, of impact and things like that? That might be the time to consider it. But that's years down the line, but I think that might be the time.
So I hear that answer as years down the line.
Yeah, I mean, I just want to be, make sure there's no other drone testing facilities that are in operation that you know of in Yola County. I'm just, I'm just, I'm just want to be clear.
We are, we are not, we are not aware. I mean, ZipLine does have a business license, but we are not aware of any other permitted or even.
Or even existing. I guess, I think that would be the problem is that there's something that's existing. They would probably.
I don't, we're not aware.
And you don't have any other zone, like Zip or drone facilities that are like.
We don't have it listed as a use in anywhere in any zone.
That's what I thought.
We do know that our cannabis inspection unit does use.
Drones, yeah.
Drones and the sheriff's office, obviously, but those are not for research.
I would say if there is a drone, you know, facility that would like to, you know, a major use permit or some sort of would be.
Oh, yeah.
Or a zoning, I, I think they are going to have to go through that process if.
They would have looked at those other zoning districts and said, hey,
Yeah.
it's listed here, it's clearly not listed in the app, yeah, but.
I, I have another interpretive question for Eric. So I'm looking at the table three oh four D. Is the, so there are specific examples listed and permit requirements for the specific examples. But the language earlier in the section emphasizes that these are examples. So it's not exclusive. So what, what drives a determination for site plan review? Is this a, does it have to be an enumerated use type, case inside a use type? Or that, that's an interpretive issue, isn't it? That we say, that's what we're doing here and type saying, oh yeah, this is a small research facility. But is it that, is it that restrictive in that we have to shoehorn it in to a specific enumerated use and say, oh, it's a small one and here's the line in the table? Or, or is it, this is a gray area and we say there is some discretion for staff to say this is, this qualifies for site plan review because it's, it meets the general intent of allowed land uses for a use type, but not, but doesn't shoehorn well to a specific use type that's enumerated in the table as an example?
I'm really happy that you're going through this process. Staff goes through this all the time. Staff goes through this process all the time, right? It's like I have a, this kind of thing I want to do. And I have to look and say, okay, you're, you're doing, we have tattoo partners, but do we have, I don't know. Piercing, piercing partner.
Right, and I.
Listed, okay, but it's similar to a tattoo.
Yeah, and I'm trying to get it, wrap my head around this. Is this an inclusive process, process or an exclusive process in terms of how we label something?
So the guidance from the code, you know, you start with what the board has to be and said, and then you can broaden it based on if there's uses that aren't listed there. Because if the code lists, you know, crop dusting facility, the AIGCEN is a minor use permit. You couldn't say, oh, there's a crop dusting facility, I'm going to make it a site. Or because it's already a drone. But if there was a facility, you can ask what the code really talks about. You're looking to the characteristics of the use. You're looking to the consistency, the, the purposes of the zone, which is really at the beginning, right? AIGCEN is set aside for larger parcels and that are used for more like ranch type uses. So the purposes of, is this consistent to those purposes? And is it still the general character of those uses where do you have guidance? So that has been an interpretive question, which I view as a threshold issue. Before then you go and decide, do I have discretion because it's a use permit? Or do I not have discretion because it's a site plan for allowed use?
Think it does, but I'm, you know, I'm, I'm still uncomfortable with the, the language of this specific example of, of a use type that leads us to, oh, it's a site plan review. And I'm very comfortable with the site plan review part. I'm uncomfortable with the shoehorning it into that specific enumerated example of a site type. And, and I'd be much more comfortable with, this is analogous to a small research and seed facility. Oh, I don't know, I got the language wrong, but.
Oh yeah, that's the same problem I have. Like you're asking us to say that it is one.
Yeah, and, and so I'd be much more comfortable saying this is analogous to, and this falls in the gray area that that's what you're asking for guidance on from the commission. And that we would then encourage pursuit of enumerating in actual code at an appropriate time. So it would be clarified going down the road.
You know, I think I'm kind of gelling on something though, which is that even though like the grammarian in me doesn't want to say it's a agricultural and seed research facility. I think it is an agricultural research facility, although it is not doing exclusively agricultural research.
In the penumbra.
Just, just a point of clarification, Stephanie. In the industrial uses, the ag, cultural and seed research facility did, do require a, a minor use permit.
That's small versus not small.
No, they're both. I'm just curious.
Yeah, but that's how we get out of seeing the table.
I know, but.
Use permit and then, but if it's a small one, then, which means under five acres.
Under five acres, that's right.
Which clearly a small one.
It's clearly a small one.
By the ground footprint.
Yeah.
Right, that's another issue, right? Like, which I'm, I'm comfortable with, but.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you want?
Um, that's funny. I'm not used to making the motions when I'm the chair.
I can make it.
I, I think we're ready to entertain a motion.
I, I, I want, I want some further, I want some further guidance from Eric on this. So suppose one were to make a motion to, not to do A, but to say that, that this is consistent with, with A. You know, some, some weasel language that it's falling in the gray area, but, but is consistent with, with the small research facility. And, and whatever language we need to say, then yes, site plan review is cool.
Well, it does say that it qualifies as, it doesn't say that it is. And, and so, so that, the language in two A right now determines, determine that the project qualifies as a small experimental agricultural seed research facility. And so for me, that, that acknowledges that it's not, it, it not is, but at the same time, right? Yeah, per code it could qualify as in this moment.
I, I withdraw my prior question to Eric.
He's already thought of the language. He was there already.
Well, I'd be, I'd be happy to, to make a motion for staff's recommendation for two A if that's the pleasure of the chair.
It's neither the pleasure of the chair nor not. I think we have, I, what my job is to make sure we've had enough discussions such that if a motion is ready to be made, that we just make it in a timely fashion. But have we had enough discussion? And if so.
That was the question, if whether that's pleasing the chair that we've had enough discussion.
I would second the motion.
Let's say the motion has been made and that it has been seconded. And. I just want to check in particularly with Commissioner Duquette because sometimes you get sidelined on Zoom. Do you have any further thoughts?
Nope.
No, okay, we can call the.
Wait, I have a, I have a comment though, because I have a comment on my motion, which is, I do. Friendly comment, which is just reinforcing that I, I do, the, the county's responsibility as a decision-making entity and as the land use authority. I, I do think we have, we, we have to put this on the list of things we need to clean up in both general plan and zoning. Because, right, like I wouldn't want to do this again.
Yeah, I a hundred percent agree with that, especially because we have, we have seen like so many environmental impact reports that do extensive like study of the exact habitat impact. And on this, we just have the broad data that like, well, we haven't hit any birds yet. So, so like, we need to clean up how we view drone facilities with relationship to those kinds of.
I would say my only, if, and now Eric's, the recommendation to follow the guidelines of the biologist around the lakes and, and any bodies of water, that that maybe is something that you guys can take seriously. I think, you know, in all, yeah, but I, I don't think there's any way for us to recommend that in a.
Boy, I do believe if, if, if I recall.
It's buffered, yeah.
Yeah, if I recall, the, the applicant did say they would follow through on the biologist's recommendation. So I believe that's already in agreement. So that would likely be included as non-discretionary conditions in the map review.
We, we'd like to think that way anyways.
Okay, now shall we have a vote?
Okay, I think we're ready.
Sounds great. Commissioner Duin. Commissioner Duquette?
Aye.
Commissioner Grill?
Aye.
Commissioner Marwin?
Aye.
Commissioner McCormick?
Aye.
Commissioner Muller? And Commissioner Seaver?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes seven zero zero. Okay, motion passes seven zero zero with everyone present. Thank you. Thank you all.
Yeah, thanks for going on that journey with us.
Journey, it's not your everyday journey.
I'll be the first to order parts from you guys.
And if you happen to want a burrito, you can also.
Which is part of, which is part of the agricultural food chain.
Okay.
Really brief, so we do plan on having a note, your November 13th meeting. I hope you're all available. Of course, we'll be bringing CEMEX to a public hearing and we have a couple of cannabis use permits. So again, a kind of a full agenda. County adopted their budget. They did make the budget, but of course, as you've been aware, it's, it's kind of been difficult. And the Williamson Act contracts have been, you know, extended to continue. I wanted to go into another matter, but I don't want to hang the commission up. But I do would like to introduce our new department head, Adam Fiesler, who stayed the entire meeting. I know you were aware of his presence, but he's been here. He was a previous planning manager and deputy director of a similar department. So I'll let him talk.
Good afternoon, Chair Dubin and the commission. Stephanie said this would be controversial. I'm used to lines and pitchforks and things like that. So this was nothing. I look forward to working with you and hopefully making some interpretations as a zoning administrator so they don't come to you. Anyways, thank you. I appreciate it. I'm very happy to be here.
Thank you, welcome.
And that's it.
Okay. Anything, Commissioner, reports that wasn't already stated in the earlier zone items?
I never have reports. I did attend the American Planning Association Conference the other week and it was fantastic. Twenty-two hundred people and many interests that we talked about at our every meeting here. So highly encourage folks, next year, queue up for the American Planning Association. It really is a wonderful experience as a planning commissioner. I'm also a practicing planner. This year it was in Monterey, which was lovely. Next year is in LA and that's also going to be a lot of fun.
Great. Future agenda items, any requests for future agenda items?
We already talked about, yeah.
You're saying you want to leave?
No drone. I'm just saying we should discuss drones at some point.
Discuss drones, future agenda. I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second by Commissioner Grill and Evelyn.
Aye.
Commissioner Duquette?
Aye.
Commissioner Grill?
Aye.
Commissioner Marwin?
Aye.
Commissioner McCormick?
Aye.
Commissioner Mueller?
Aye.
Commissioner Seva?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, and thank you for accommodating me. Bye.